All right, thank you very much, Council. I apologize for the few minute delayed start. We do want to officially call the emergency City Council meeting of Wednesday, May 3rd, to order. City Clerk, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Mayor Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Protem Miranda?
Here.
Councilmember Keller?
Here.
Thank you.
Very good, and I would, if we would, please all rise, though I still think we should, we sign our pledge. If you would please rise and join me. Repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you very much. I do believe we have two speakers on this item before we move into our next steps. All right, first speaker on this item is Elaine Ballas, followed by Troy Hooper, and then followed by Laura Stotler. All right, Elaine, you are up first.
Okay, I think this, I think this meeting is for the Assembly tomorrow, and I think that it should be a lawful assembly. I think you should be the one to address it before and say that they do have their constitutional rights, which you are respecting. Should it get out of hand or anything goes wrong, you also have the right to shut it down for the safety of the public. But other than that, I truthfully believe that the Constitution has to be adhered to.
All right, thank you very much, Elaine. I'm sorry, I was reading some of the written comment cards. Our other public speaker is Steve Petzold. Steve, you are on the line. All right, Steve, go ahead and unmute yourself. I think we've got you, but we got you unmute. While we're waiting for Steve to work through those technical issues, we do have three written comments, again, from Kathleen.
Hello?
Yeah, there you go, Steve.
Yeah, I'm just very concerned about the curfew for 4:00 tomorrow. I was at the rally on Saturday, and it was declared an unlawful assembly. The location is inappropriate. I do not know whether the city or the sheriff has received a request for a permit or application for remit for this assembly, but I certainly think you have to consider whether it is within the health and safety guidelines of the city to permit this assembly at that location. As you know, on the 4th of July, maybe 10 years ago, somebody was killed in a car accident there, right where Islands is. This is not the appropriate location. You should block off the parking at Westfield Plaza, the Park and Ride, and the mall to discourage this assembly. The assembly on Saturday was declared unlawful because they were boisterous.
Steve, go ahead and finish up your thought. I know it's a little, because it's an emergency meeting, the timing's a little bit different, but go ahead and finish up your thought.
You've got the basis for it. I disagree with Elaine, and I think that you're within your rights to assign that rally to another area of the city that might be more safe.
All right, very good, thank you. Again, we do have three written comments from Troy Hooper, Laura Stotler, and Kathleen Christensen that I can share with the council during the meeting if you want to read, read their comments on the item. As we do that, the next item is, we have one item on the agenda that is a closed-session item. I'll ask the city attorney to please read the announcement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we would request a recess into closed session under Government Code Section 54957 to allow consultation with the City Manager and Captain Justin Diaz of the L.A. County Sheriff's, and I would request a motion to recess into closed session at this time.
So moved.
All right, very good. Do we need a roll call on this, or to?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's go ahead and then call the roll.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Miranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Keller?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Smythe?
Aye.
All right, very good. This time we'll then recess to closed session, and we will reconvene for a public announcement once that is concluded. All right, we'd like to welcome everybody back from our closed session. City Attorney, if you would.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we're going to move on to the next item. The council just received a briefing from the City Manager and Captain Justin Diaz with the L.A. County Sheriff's. Before you this evening is consideration of a resolution that would proclaim the existence of a local emergency due to civil unrest and also order a curfew to commence tomorrow. I believe there's the draft that's before you, says 4:00 p.m. There was discussion about moving that to 6:00 p.m. tomorrow, and that would conclude at 6:00 a.m. the following morning. The purpose of the declaration, the governor has issued a declaration of emergency for L.A. County. The county has issued a declaration of emergency for L.A. County that enables the imposition of curfews. The curfew right now in L.A. County for this evening starts at 9:00 p.m. and ends at 5:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. The city has received credible information that there may be protest activity tomorrow, and I think everybody is hopeful that it will be peaceful protest activity, but in the event that it is not, and in an abundance of caution, the recommendation is that this resolution be adopted and that a curfew for 6:00 p.m. be imposed.
And to be clear, that is for one day only.
One day only, Thursday, starting at 6:00 p.m., ending Friday morning.
Very good.
I'm available to answer any questions. The same authority that, in the Government Code, that both the county and the governor are relying on for imposition of these types of orders is the same authority that you are able to rely on as well.
Thank you. So to be clear, that tomorrow, regardless of what the county has ordered for their, their curfew orders, the City of Santa Clarita will institute a curfew starting at 6:00 p.m. Thursday, concluding at 6:00 a.m. Friday morning, for one day only. And with that, is there any public comments or requests? Very good, then let's take those before we move on and with the vote. Very good, all right, we have, I believe, four speakers on the item. First, again, Elaine Ballas, followed by Thomas Hart, followed by Steve Petzold. So, again, Elaine, you are, you are up.
Okay, I couldn't hear you at the very beginning. I missed, so I missed out, other than the curfews at 6:00. Could you repeat it and not count it as my dime?
Certainly, hold the clock. The curfew will begin Thursday at 6:00 p.m. and will last until Friday morning at 6:00 a.m., and it is a one-day-only curfew for the City of Santa Clarita.
No, prior to that, about the right to assemble tomorrow if one chooses, did you say something about that at the very beginning?
No, we had not. It was, the city attorney was just referencing the Government Code and the establishment of the emergency order that allows for the curfews to be implemented.
So they still have the right to assemble lawfully?
That is correct.
Are you going to be there to tell them at the very beginning what the city is expecting of them? Because I think that would be great. I don't think too many people are watching this right now, and I think if you show that you are supporting their right to lawful assembly and that you are not tolerating it and that the curfew is being, you know, imposed at 6:00, and law enforcement will be, you know, there if it gets out of hand. I think you've got to show support to the people who have the right to lawfully assemble under the Constitution of the United States.
Very good, thank you, Elaine. All right, Thomas Hart, followed by Steve Petzold, followed by Daniel Kalik. Forgive me if I'm mispronouncing your name, but, Mr. Hart, you are up next.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Smythe. I just had a quick point about Section 1. I think of order of Resolution Number 29. I think that 60 days is too long for this emergency. I think a week might be more appropriate, and furthermore, I don't think that it should automatically renew. I think that it should, by default, not renew unless the city at that point chooses to renew it. In general, I think that's the appropriate tact to take with emergencies. And the second thing is that I just think that, I just encourage the city and the police to refrain from using force to the extent that is possible. I know that there's a worry about looters, and nobody wants that. I'm also worried about the National Guard being called in, and I don't, I read on Hometown Station that it's being called in. I'm just wondering about the extent that the National Guard is going to be present as well.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Steve, why don't you hold on if we, Daniel, if you were there, why don't we reverse that, and while you work out your technical difficulties, Daniel, if you are on the line, you can, you're up.
Hello?
Yes, we got you.
Hi, I just wanted to say that instituting a curfew on San Clarita residents serves few purposes. None of them are good or beneficial to the community. Regardless of whether the allegedly scheduled protest happens tomorrow or not, a curfew is unnecessary for a variety of reasons. First, preemptively issuing a curfew before any public action has taken place is an undue burden on the people's First Amendment right to protest under the freedom of speech and expression. Secondly, curfews issued in the last week have largely been ineffective in their intended goals of restricting protests, and enforcement actions from curfews have escalated protests to violence. Third, the added effect of a curfew is to burden the productivity and recreational activity not only of the protesters but also of the private sector and the general public, which distracts from the pain and suffering of the protesters that they want to draw attention to. And make no mistake, the actual goal of an unintended curfew is not to punish the protesters but more harshly, but to turn public sentiment against those interrupting the daily life of the general public and business.
Very good, thank you, sir. Appreciate the comment. Mr. Petzold, we got you back.
Mr. Mayor, are you talking to me by any chance?
Got it. No, we're talking to Steve, we're looking for Steve Petzold. Steve Petzold, it sounds like you are still muted. So while we're working on that, City Attorney, if you wanted to respond to any of the comments about the duration and the, of the emergency order?
Yes, the, under the Government Code, the emergency order has to be revisited at least every 60 days to make sure that it is still necessary to prolong the declaration of emergency. It can be rescinded at any time, but the 60 days is put in there just as the default because you have to come back no later than 60 days to revisit it. Certainly, if the emergency is not in existence at your next regular meeting or any subsequent meeting, we can revisit and rescind it.
Very good, thank you. All right, we're going to give Mr. Petzold one more shot here, and if not, then we will move to take up the item and proceed with our meeting.
Yes.
All right, very good, then, Councilmember McLean, question?
My question is, you said that the, the curfew is for one day only, but if necessary, I'm assuming it can be implemented. By whom?
Yes, the, once you declare a state of emergency, either the council or the Director of Emergency Services can renew, extend, or adjust the curfew. Your Director of Emergency Services would be your City Manager. So in the event that extending the curfew or renewing the curfew for an additional period becomes necessary, the City Manager can do that on much quicker timeframe than reconvening the council.
Okay, I just asked because I think the question is going to be out there. Thank you.
All right, very good. Looks like technical difficulties have prevented Mr. Petzold, but we will continue to try to work on, on that. So, Council, we do have an item before us, as read by the, the City Attorney. Unless there are any other questions for the City Manager or City Attorney, we can proceed with adopting or taking a vote on the item.
Do you need a motion?
We do need a motion to adopt.
I would move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
I'll second. Very good, so we have a motion by Councilmember McLean, seconded by Mayor Protem Miranda, and so let's go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Keller?
Yes.
Councilmember West?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Miranda?
Yes.
Councilmember McLean?
Yes.
Mayor Smythe?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, very good. This was the only item on the agenda. We will adjourn and proceed with a community update on the front of City Hall, and as quickly as we can, transition over there, as well as our media partners to get set up. So with that, Council, we are adjourned.
Good evening, Santa Clarita. I am your Mayor, Cameron Smythe, and I'm joined here today by Mayor Protem Bill Miranda, Councilmembers Bob Keller, Marsha McLean, and Loreen West. Also with us is our City Manager, Ken Striplin, and our Santa Clarita Valley Sheriff Captain, Justin Diaz. We wanted to come together as a council, and while we have, over the last week, made comments individually, this was the first time that we had come together as a body, and we thought it was important to share a message to the community as well as update you with the information we have to date regarding the anticipated protests of tomorrow. The last six months in our community have been unbelievably challenged. It started with the devastating Tick Fire that initiated the largest evacuation in our city's history. Shortly thereafter, our community was rocked and forever changed by the shooting at Saugus High School. Then 2020, we start with a, you know, the global pandemic, the likes of which none of us have ever seen or experienced, and that brings us to last week, where many of us were rightly and justifiably shocked and hurt and angered following the murder of George Floyd by Minneapolis police officers. I was personally encouraged today to see that the Attorney General has escalated the charges against the offending officer, as well as charging and issuing arrest warrants for the other three. But I know that that isn't enough, and that justice will take time. And as such, communities around the country, and in fact, around the world, have joined to issue and to share and to voice their frustration and their anger about the injustices, certainly that were perpetrated against Mr. Floyd. We have heard through, from our residents about, and we've heard from our protesters that have been demanding justice, and we are proud of the passion, determination, and commitment to insist upon equality and civil rights for all of our residents. And I want to assure the community that we hear your voices, we see your emails, your correspondence, and the council will take steps in coordination with our law enforcement, with our community partners, to work together to develop a guideline, a plan for Santa Clarita specifically, much as we've done around addressing the issue of homelessness in our community. We are unique here in Santa Clarita, and we will work together to ensure that those in our community that feel the weight of that injustice have a voice and have a seat at the table to develop a clear, consistent message here in Santa Clarita. And that started last Saturday, when residents came together to peacefully assemble and protest as a community. And while we have seen instances throughout the nation of violence and damage to property, to individuals, we did not see that here in Santa Clarita. We are proud to report that our protest, the protest on Saturday resulted in zero arrests, zero property damage, zero threat to our businesses or other residents. And I want to make it clear that those who wish to come to Santa Clarita, or those who live in our community that wish to peaceably assemble and voice their, and make their voices heard, and are exercising their First Amendment right, you are more than welcome to do that here in our community. However, those who wish to take advantage of these peaceful protests and use that as an opportunity to either loot or riot, that will not be tolerated. To protect our businesses and neighborhoods from those that want to take part in such lawlessness, earlier today, the City Council adopted a 6:00 p.m. curfew, starting tomorrow evening. Regardless of what the county order says, the City of Santa Clarita will be under curfew from 6:00 p.m. Thursday, June 4th, until 6:00 a.m. Friday, June 5th. After that time, no one will be allowed to be on our city's streets and sidewalks, and but businesses need to be closed. There are exceptions, of course, for those who need, who are traveling to and from work or to provide essential emergency services, and if you are traveling back into Santa Clarita from other parts of the region, you certainly are free to do so as you are traveling back home. This curfew will allow our Sheriff's Department to be more able to identify those who are looking to not peacefully protest but to cause harm and damage to our community. We have had a number of businesses reach out as to what we guide and what we advise, and we have told all our businesses that those are decisions that you need to make and they need to make for themselves. We have seen businesses from Main Street to here in the city center area, to other parts of Saugus and Canyon Country that have made the choice to close down their businesses, while others are choosing to remain open. We just ask that those businesses that choose to remain open take the necessary precautions to protect their employees and potential customers. Additionally, our Sheriff's Department, led by Captain Diaz, has also put in a play, a plan in place to protect property, businesses, and our community. And while, again, we hope and expect based on last week, a peaceful protest, we are preparing and calling in the resources necessary to protect our community. We are working closely with the Sheriff's Station, Highway Patrol, Los Angeles County Fire Department, and we have a plan in place, communications in place, and will be monitoring incidents throughout the day and night. We have also requested the National Guard to come and support our law enforcement personnel to help deter any would-be looters or those who wish to riot. We are taking a strong stance tonight and have the resources and plans in place to protect our community. And I want to say once again, if you are here and your desire is to peaceably assemble and exercise your First Amendment right and voice your justifiable anger, you are more than welcome to do that here in our community. But those that want to take advantage and use these protests as a reason or as a shield to commit acts of violence or crime against our community, that will not be tolerated. And so I'd like to ask our Sheriff's Captain, Justin Diaz, to step up and provide some additional information.
Thank you, Mayor Smythe. Good evening, everyone. My name is Captain Justin Diaz from Santa Clarita Sheriff's Station. I'd like to start by thanking our entire Santa Clarita community, the whole entire valley, for all the support that you've given, our men and women assigned to our station each and every day. I'd like to talk about the protest last Saturday. I'm pleased to say that it was a very peaceful protest. There were no incidents, and it went very well, and we are very pleased with it. With that said, to the protesters that were out there, please know that we at Santa Clarita Valley Sheriff's Station, we hear you. We heard your message, and we respect it. We have protests scheduled for tomorrow. It's our hope that that protest will certainly continue in a peaceful light, and I want everybody to know that we respect your rights, everybody's voices should be heard, and we will respect your First Amendment rights. Also, I'd like everybody to know that due to the sizable, the size of the scheduled protest, we have brought in significant, I'd like to stress, significant county resources. Those resources are going to be from all facets of the Sheriff's Department. So please know that regardless of what happens in Santa Clarita, you will, you will be well protected. We will have plenty of resources on hand. We have been coordinating efforts with our partners at the city, our partners at the county, and other law enforcement agencies to ensure that this community is protected. I'd also like to remind residents to be mindful of social media posts. There's a lot of misinformation on social media that have been going around the last several days, especially since our protest on Saturday, and I'd like to remind people to be very careful what you see on social media, what you read, and the important thing is that you get your news, you get your information from official sources. And those official sources are going to be from the Sheriff's Department, they're going to be from the City of Santa Clarita, and they're going to be from the county of Los Angeles. You know, our job in law enforcement, whether it's Santa Clarita Valley or any law enforcement agency in the county, and certainly the Sheriff's Department, is to be prepared for any situation that may arise. And please know, rest assured, that our deputies have been working around the clock to serve this community every day, and absolutely around the clock to ensure that we have a successful protest and everything that needs to be done to ensure the success and to keep everyone's safety. Lastly, to our entire Santa Clarita Valley, and that's everybody in this valley, please be rest assured that your Santa Clarita Sheriff's Station will keep you well protected, and you have nothing to fear. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Chief. That concludes our prepared remarks. If you have any questions for the council or the chief, I'd be happy to take those at this time.
I know you've already iterated this, but could you maybe state to people who may be wondering, was any... be wondering, was any sort of permit issued for the protest scheduled?
Thank you for the question. The issue of permits are, the city only grants permits when you are looking for events that would require the use of public parks, so for example, events like Boots and Brew's or soccer tournaments that are used at Central Park, that would require a permit, or if you are utilizing city streets, thinking of the many charity walks that we have in our community or the Tour of California, those would require permits. But to peaceably gather on a public right-of-way, like the sidewalks here, as we have seen with the protest on Saturday and some of the other rallies earlier or last month, those do not require permits, and so as long as people are not impeding traffic and are not in the streets, you have the First Amendment right to assemble peaceably and voice your opinion. And we certainly protect that, and we welcome that. We just want to make sure that it remains peaceful and doesn't put the health and safety of the, of those who are assembling or those that are driving by getting into the street. So there is no permit required to come and assemble on a street corner here in Santa Clarita to express your First Amendment right. Thank you.
Can you maybe reiterate a little bit of why the city decided to plan a planned protest for both of us as opposed to maybe the Saturday protest?
I would say, one, there was credible information that began the planning for a second protest tomorrow as opposed to the protest on Saturday seemed to occur a little bit more organically, whereas this one here on Thursday has been more planned. We have certainly seen comments, as you all have, that have expressed the potential for very large and aggressive participation from those that are not residents here in Santa Clarita. And so we felt with the information we had and the time to prepare, and quite frankly, what we have seen in other cities throughout the country and here in California, it was important for us to take the necessary steps to deploy the resources we have to ensure the security of our residents and our local businesses and property, and also to ensure that those that want to protest peacefully are able to do so and that their message isn't lost because of actions of others that may want to use that viable, justifiable protest as a shield for their own agenda. Thank you. All right, very good. We want to thank you all for being here. Please be safe, and we appreciate you getting the message out to our community. Thank you all.